I will now call to December nineteen, two thousand twenty-two, Blue Springs City Council meeting. No order. If you would, stand with me. Observe a moment of silence and I will lead you into the place of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated. Want to welcome those in attendance, as well as those that might watch later on cable, TV, social media, whichever one they so desire. Next, we need a confirmation of a quorum.
Councilmember Kayler.
Present.
Levise.
Here.
Fowler.
Here.
Erickson.
Present.
Edmondson.
Here.
Culpepper.
Present.
Mayor Ross.
Here.
You have a form.
All right. Next, we have to consider agenda unless their items need to be pulled. I accept the motion for approval.
So moved.
Their second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kayler.
Aye.
Levise.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have a public hearing on the fan restoration condition of use permit.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter to the record. City Council information form dated December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two with the following attachments: staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on November twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two, one hundred and eighty-five-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within one hundred and eighty-five feet of the site, copy of letter sent to said property owners, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, twenty-fourteen comprehensive plan by reference, and bill approving the conditional use permit. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Before you this evening is a request for a conditional use permit to allow for a building and construction contractor in general business zoning property located thirty-seven-one-nine Southwest US forty highway. The property is zone GB, which allows for building or construction contractor business with approval of a conditional use permit. On November seventh, two thousand twenty-two, the UDC amendment was approved to allow building and construction contracting land uses to be located within the general business zoning district with approval of a conditional use permit. Staff reviewed the request under the conditional use permit under the building or construction contract review criteria for those standards. Based on review criteria, the CUP did not meet one of the criterias. According to the UDC, no front or street-facing building facade facing the arterial collector street shall be modified to include overhead doors for the proposed building or construction contractor land use. Overhead doors may only be located side or rear facades of the building. Through an alternative development standard, the applicant is requesting to waive the requirement for front-facing street overhead doors that will be facing the collector street. Staff believes that the proposed alternative development standard is sufficient because the overhead doors are set far enough from Southwest Thirty-seventh Street, which will remain out of sight due to existing trees on the property. There are no other developments proposed. Planning Commission held a public hearing on December twelfth, at which no one spoke in favor or in opposition to a request. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the conditional use permit, seven in favor, zero opposed. Based on review criteria for both our alternative development standard and the conditional use permit, staff recommends approval of the conditions with conditions. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any question from the council? Staff? Seeing none? Thank you. Is the applicant present? Okay, we'll go to the public. In order, next we can support of. Support of. Opposition two. Opposition two. Close this public here. We'll go to introduction reading of bill number five-zero-four-four.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of bill number five-zero-four-four, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow building or construction contractor with machinery, equipment, or storage in the GB general business zoning district.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Second reading of bill number five-zero-four-four, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow building or construction contractor with machinery, equipment, or storage in the GB general business zoning district.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Levise.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number five-one-seven-three.
Next, we have a public hearing on the Summit Behavioral Services Conditional Use Permit.
I apologize. I apologize on the last roll call. Apparently I missed. Councilmember Kayler, I apologize.
But it's an aye.
It's an aye. Thank you very much. Zipped her a little too quickly there. Thank you. In the second public hearing, exhibit, City Council information form dated December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two with the following attachments: staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on November twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two, one hundred and eighty-five-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within one hundred and eighty-five feet of the site, copy of letter sent to said property owners, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, twenty-fourteen comprehensive plan by reference, and bill approving conditional use permit. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Staff report.
All right. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda tonight for your consideration is the request for a renewal of the conditional use permit to allow a school use at twenty-one-hundred Northwest Seven Highway. Schools may operate in a GB general business zoning district with the approval of a conditional use permit. Summit Behavioral Services was approved for a conditional use permit in October of two thousand twenty-one to allow for the school, elementary, middle, or high use at this location. Approval was granted contingent upon the completion of a parking lot expansion and additional property improvements within twelve months. The applicant states that they were unable to complete the required improvements within the timeframe due to a shortage of available contractors and are requesting the renewal of the conditional use permit. Since the approval of the original conditional use permit, the property has undergone preliminary and final plating processes, as well as obtained an approved site plan design review. This application is solely for the renewal of the conditional use permit to allow the school land use. If approved, the conditional use permit shall be valid for twelve months, beginning December twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. During this time, all public and private improvements to accommodate the use shall be completed. Improvements include, but are not limited to, a five-foot ADA compliant sidewalk along Northwest Seven Highway, parking improvements, and landscaping improvements. If all required property improvements are completed, the conditional use permit will be automatically renewed indefinitely. If required improvements are not completed by December twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, the conditional use permit must be renewed for another period of time to guarantee improvements will be made, or the conditional use permit may be revoked or expire. Staff reviewed the application and finds that all review criteria has been met and allows for the continuation of the operation of a school on the subject property. Staff recommends approval of the CUP with three conditions outlined in the staff report. The application was heard by the Planning Commission on December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval, and I will stand for any questions.
Any question by council?
I have a few.
Yes. Councilmember Erickson?
If I recall, and it's in this packet from two thousand twenty-one, wasn't there a requirement also to combine those two lots into single ownership? I don't believe, looking at the county parcel, that that's been done, has it?
Yes, they have been. It's been replatted. They are platted together while there are two lots, I believe.
Yeah, the city did do a lot combination, and they were plotted singular lot. The reason why it has not been reflected on the county's website is because the county is no longer updating parcel information until throughout the year until the beginning of the next calendar.
I got you. I got you. Okay, and then make it real simple for me. Are there any conditions that are missing from this new request that weren't in the first one, or is this basically a two thousand twenty-two version of two thousand twenty-one?
Yes, that is correct. It is. It is a continuation of the same conditions.
Okay. And one more. Have they been issued an occupancy permit?
That I do not know.
They would have at least been issued a temporary certificate of occupancy, which would have ensured that the building life safety issues were in place for them to be in the building. I do not know if it is a full occupancy or a temporary.
There are two different kinds then, because the original thing that we, the original packet that we approved said that these things shall be done before occupancy permits will be issued.
Yeah, and technically, and typically when that, if those things happen, we get to the point where they may not be able to do some landscaping improvements or some other things. So I do not have the answer for that, so I don't want to venture and give you the wrong information.
I might as well finish. Is there any reason we cannot make this a shorter period? I mean, it's a sidewalk and a parking lot, and they're using the parking lot for cars. I know that. They've done that frequently throughout the year. Is there something magic in the rules about a year, or can we make it a day, or can we make it eighteen months or six months? Do whatever we wish.
The timeframe for a conditional use permit is part of the conditional use permit, so if council wished to make that a shorter or longer time, they could. Staff just put in there a year based upon the last one. So, but the timeframe established as part of approval of a conditional use permit is entirely at the discretion of the city council.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Kayler.
I just have a comment, sir.
Go ahead.
The lot on the east side that we're talking about making a parking lot has still been used as a parking lot on the grass in the areas, and I'd like to hear from Mr. Mallon what he has thoughts of that while we're waiting on a contractor or contractors to do this, it being still grass and parking on it.
That is not in conformance with the city code for parking for commercial businesses. So staff could take the action of citing them for illegally parking on unapproved, basically parking lot surface. I think the parking has become an issue, and staff could go down that path, yes. So it is not permitted the way it's being operated today.
I understand their issue of not finding a contractor, because there are a lot of the ones that are still in business and still going are so busy that it's kind of hard to get somebody out there. But for the last six months, we've been using that lot that I know of when I've seen it as a parking lot. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Any other comments? Seeing none? All in favor, aye?
Oh, that's right. Trying to get you out of here.
Any other questions from staff? Developer present? Like to make any comments? Are you satisfied with what's been said?
Yep.
Okay.
I would like to ask the applicant a question.
Okay, why don't you come up here, be sworn in. Raise your right hand and...
I do. Dan Matthews at twelve-thirty East One Hundred and Eighty-Eighth Terrace in Pleasant Hill.
We're talking about a twelve-month extension. Are you needing twelve months? And what about the parking on the grass issue?
I'm not the contractor. I thought it was going to be done this year, and I have assurances that we're going to get to it as soon as the weather allows, which currently is not known. But we will, we will begin as soon as, as soon as the weather allows us, and I expect it will be done well before the one-year requirement.
So you anticipate the spring having it completed?
I anticipate it being very well underway in the spring, if not completed, yes. I mean...
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. And regarding the parking, we did get a friendly notice, and so we have not been parking there, to my knowledge, since. That was about three weeks ago.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Kayler.
So with this late, have we not applied for a permit, even though the contractor says he's going to be here, going to do this?
We've applied for all of it.
So have we, have we issued permits for this project?
I'm looking that up right now.
Thank you, sir.
If you have other questions for the applicant, I can keep looking this up.
That, that would satisfy me on that one.
Okay.
Councilmember Levise.
I'll just give you the opportunity, since there's been some questions. What has been the issue? You mentioned waiting for a contractor. I have the benefit of being at the Planning Commission, but if you could explain some of that for public record.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I don't think it's a big secret that it's been hard to find staff help, and then when we do find help, they're backed up and busy. We started with our contractor early in the summer, knowing that he had a, they had a long list, and, you know, it got away from them, which then gets away from me.
Okay. Thank you.
So we're waiting for Mike, so looking it up.
Can I ask a quick question?
Go ahead.
I just want to be sure, maybe this is a statement, I just want to be sure that when we're talking mostly about the parking lot, but the sidewalk is a piece of the parking lot with your contract. Is that correct?
Yes, per the agreement with the city.
We could expect that to be done at the same time.
At the same time, yep.
Any other fillers while he's looking that up?
I don't have any jokes.
Jerry, can you play your Jeopardy music?
I was gonna see if you wanted me to play Jeopardy while we...
I think we're in public hearing.
Just on a quick search of our, of our permit tracking system, I don't see any building permits that have been issued, but I, I may not have a full list of them up here right now, so...
I don't have the, all the information either in front of me, but as I recall, we were in the process of having that permit issued when we realized that we'd exceeded the, the conditional use permit.
Okay.
Okay. Why don't we just, once they, once you finalize, why don't you just get back with us and shoot us an email, let us know.
Absolutely.
Well, I'm glad to hear that we're not parking on the grass.
No, I think that's been alleviated. I've asked them to, so they usually do what I say.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. We'll go to the public. Anyone else, thanks. We can support of. Support of. Opposition two. Opposition two. Close this public here. Who would like to introduce bill number five-zero-four-five?
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of bill number five-zero-four-five, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow for a school in a GB general business zoning district at twenty-one-hundred Northwest Seven Highway.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Erickson.
Is this the proper time to change the, to offer an amendment, to change the time?
Yes.
Your Honor, I would move that we change the time to July one of two thousand twenty-three for completion, or, might be a little nebulous, at least progression on the process of the parking lot and sidewalk.
Is that a proper motion? Our city attorney?
Skip the progress if you need to.
I think it'd be helpful for staff to have a permanent, an actual date in place.
Then, Your Honor, I would move we change the date to July one, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, you heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
No.
Okay, we have one. No vote. Okay, well, is there a motion to approve the first reading as amended?
Go move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Second reading.
Second reading of bill number five-zero-four-five, as amended, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow a school in a GB general business zoning district at twenty-one-hundred Northwest Seven Highway.
Motion?
Your Honor, move the bill as amended, be approved on its second reading, and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
For second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Levise.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number five-one-seven-four.
Item number eight is dwelling by design, rezoning, and general development plan that was continued from the December fifth meeting will be continued to a future date. I don't think we need to have a motion on that. We do need a motion on it?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Your Honor, people, people have asked me on the street, if you will, about the progress. Do we have any concept of that future date? Is it still on the books, I guess?
The applicant's in the audience, if you want.
It's just a question. Maybe it's an inappropriate question in this...
No, we're just going through some of the processes with the city. We had to revamp it after the first meeting.
So it's still kind of, it's still in the works?
Yes.
Okay. Let's just, want to know.
Okay, so future date without a specific date. Now, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next, we have introduction reading of bill number five-zero-four-six.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of bill number five-zero-four-six, an ordinance approving the final plat for Villas at North at Chapman Farms, Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
I'll get a second one.
Second reading of bill number five-zero-four-six, an ordinance approving the final plat for Villas North at Chapman Farms, Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Your Honor.
Oh.
Yep, just real quick.
Go ahead.
This is the one that we're, the, I know the concept plan was minimum lot with, lot was sixty-five down to fifty-five feet, then the square footage, lot size was seventy-two-hundred down to forty-eight-hundred, forty-eight-hundred-and-forty-four square feet. I ended up voting, I guess, on the, at the concept plan level. I'm going to be consistent here as well.
Okay. Any other further discussion? If not, roll call.
Councilmember Erickson.
No.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
No.
Levise.
Aye.
Fowler.
No.
Mayor Ross.
Right.
Motion carries with a vote of four to three, given ordinance number five-one-seven-five.
Next, we have a discussion on the city council travel policy. We're going to go to our, our city administrator.
Thank you, sir. The item before the council this evening for discussion is a, a draft policy that will look and guide directly the reimbursable expenses at the council and mayor level. Recently, this was part of our district conversations, our district meetings, where there was some confusion at the staff level and some, some judgment calls that had to be made in terms of what were some of the reimbursable expenses when it came to travel, conference fees, as well as some of the networking events and other items. The policy that is in front of council this evening, the only major change that is made in that policy that'll just apply to council is for the ability to have reimbursed, reimbursed expenses for lodging, for events, training, and conferences here within the Kansas City metropolitan area. Currently, that is not allowed under the employee policy, and council is, follows that employee policy currently. Some other items that came up during the discussions of the district meeting were also about including reimbursable expenses for social networking events associated with the conference, reimbursements for spouse or guest travel to attend the conferences, as well as reimbursement for additional expenses such as valet parking, upgraded internet, and meals outside the normal per diem that is also currently within policy. At this time, as part of the discussion, staff is just looking for direction on the current, the, the draft council policy that is in front of you tonight, and also whether or not staff should include the other three items that had been discussed at the council district meetings, and if council would like to move forward, give us that feedback, and we can have that in front of council for approval at the next meeting. That is all for a staff report, and I stand up for any questions.
City administrator and I had a discussion about it this afternoon, and think that we do need to have a separate policy from staff and the council and the mayor, because we do different things than they do. When conferences are held in Kansas City, it's almost irrelevant to try to run back and forth between Blue Springs and the city, and you need to be able to stay down there so you can get the full benefit of the conference. And also, when you talk about the meals at this very last one in Kansas City, the one that was paid for within the conference, I just didn't have McDonald's. Probably would have been better. It was that bad. But yet, you had to pay out of your pockets for the breakfast or the dinner. And so, yeah, and so we discussed, we need your input and feedback, but my feedback is we need to change that policy different than staff, because we have different roles and different things that we do. Yes, council member.
Okay, I'll start off. Councilman Fowler and I drove back and forth to the NLC, and we did miss out on things. It took a lot of time out of our day that could have been spent there, learning and absorbing and going to different educational sessions. Also, as, as you have noted, the food was, well, they called it a meal, but I, I have problems trying to call that a meal. And so, anything that we ate, we paid for out of pocket. And so I just think that it's kind of difficult. To me, the whole purpose of these conferences is to share ideas, to go to the sessions, and to become educated on what's going on around us and what we may do to improve our own community. So I really don't think that even if it's in Kansas City, I don't feel like we should be driving back and forth.
And when you drive back and forth, you got to try to find a parking spot.
Yeah.
Council, I'm going to go down the line.
We should go down the line? In thinking about this, I don't know whether you staff would want to go in and say that if you were attending a conference that, say, was just one day, that there's no need for lodging. But if it's over two to three, or three or four days, something like that, it, it would be beneficial to being able to have lodging near where you were at. The, I don't know, the, the time and driving and the risk in driving, depending on the time of year, you know, you're traveling down there on city business. I don't know necessarily if you're, you're covered under your own insurance if something would happen, but if you got into something like that on city business, can you fall back on the city, come back and say, we were, you know, traveling for something for the city? I'm not saying I'm recommending that we do that, but there's always an option there that somewhere along the line, if something does happen, maybe we should cover ourselves on the insurance side of it by saying, stay there, if you, if you follow what I'm talking about. Food is food. It just depends on where you're at, but, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a dice game when you do it. The other part of this is, when we say that's KC Metro, I think that gives the illusion that we're just talking about metro Kansas City, and we're really not. We're talking about, what, six, eight counties?
Eight counties.
Yeah, eight counties that we travel in that, that mileage is not paid. So I don't know whether it'd be better to, and I'm picking hairs, I'm throwing stuff out, but this is for discussion, if we set a, a boundary like so many radius miles from Blue Springs. And, you know, theoretically, you could be halfway to St. Joe and still be within a county, they're not going to pay mileage. So I don't know, if you set up radius of, you know, hundred miles, fifty miles, ninety miles, or something like that, to me, would be maybe a little bit better than just abstractly just saying all these counties. Because there are times that we do drive, I mean, way up past Excelsior Springs, you know, there's some distance sometimes we travel. We've been to, what, Lexington, Raymore. We went to Raymore for one. So some of those may, I want to say, may inhibit people from attending those, which is bad for that organization. For example, MML, I'll be specific, Missouri Municipal League, you know, if, if we don't attend that, then they're not going to host those. So now, we're actually causing something that we get a benefit out of by not showing up with our participation. So again, I'm just saying, staff, if you want to come up and feel what they think is appropriate, but eight counties, that's, that's a lot. So that's my opinions.
I think the intent of this meeting is to get what you want as a council, as a mayor and council.
Okay.
Councilmember Erickson.
I'll, I'll make it really brief. I hadn't thought about the mileage, but I'm a council member in Blue Springs, so if I go to Independence, I'm out of my league. if I go to Independence, I'm out of my league, if you will, so I'm not going to ask for miles, but if you're going back and forth, or if we're going downtown Kansas City, I suppose that would be fair. It, it, I, I don't know, that's kind of, to me, that's the way it ought to be, if you're going to meeting, if it's outside of Blue Springs, it's outside of Blue Springs. And then, councilmember Edmondson, you've got a really good point on the one-day events. However, this last meeting that we're referring to, the last day of the event, it, I believe it was over at twelve-thirty or two-thirty or something, but then the, this celebratory part, and then there was a whole bunch of networking and all this that went clear up into the evening. So if that were a one-day event, then you'd still probably want to do that, so I, I guess, I don't know if you could do discretionary things, like, okay, this meeting, you're not going to do that, this meeting, you're going to do that, but I, I, I'd make it a little more for whomever it is. I don't care if it's me or somebody else.
Councilmember Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor, um, I suppose my only concern that I saw through the reading of this is the approvals. There's a lot of, like, specific approvals along the way. Being the mayor over the executive branch, the execution of government, to me, you should be doing that, and, uh, if, if you need this approval for something, our mayor pro temp could, could do that, I think, so...
It's been that way for the last fifteen years I've been mayor.
So is that, okay, I just want to make sure I had your support on that, too.
Right.
Yeah.
Councilmember Levisay?
Well, I would just echo Councilmember Fowler. My only concern is just the, from the, the draft policy to the existing policy is just that, I don't want to put our city administrator in an uncomfortable position down the line where he's seeking to not approve or approve something that you're seeking to approve or not approve, and so I think we need a, whatever that looks like, it needs to be clear in the policy, because the existing policy mentions the mayor approving things several times, and the draft policy does not, and so I, I would just not want to put staff in that uncomfortable position to be at odds with the elected officials. It should be spelled out clear, so whenever it happens, we know the path, and it's not a question, so that's my only thought on that.
Councilmember Kayler?
Well, I could go on and talk for several minutes, but I'm not going to do it. Ditto to what everybody said. It's exactly my sentiments. Thank you, sir.
Okay, so the administrator, you pretty much got the consensus of the council?
So...
Again, we will have a separate policy for mayor and council than staff.
Correct, so it sounds like...
Based on the comments that you got from them, and you and I can work on that together.
Yeah, absolutely, and I just want to recount, um, so what I'm, I'm hearing and what I have notes are on, um, and we want to verify whether or not the, the counties are in IRS restriction, or if that was something that we had, had placed in policy, um, so we'll verify that, but we'll look at a radius versus the counties. Um, also going to look at moving the approvals to the mayor. Um, if there was any, uh, those are really kind of the only two major things that I saw in there that needed to be changed in the current draft proposal, um, and so that's what we'll take back and we'll work on to bring back in front of council for approval.
You get the part about the lodging?
Yes, and that, that's currently...
But that includes the meals.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Okay, well, that brings us to visitors. I don't have any visitors or speaker, speaker forms here.
I guess one other, one other thing I'd just like to say is that on the travel policy, all that, regardless of what it is, goes through our current audit and review process at the end anyway, so is that correct? That, we're not, nobody's changing, talking about changing any of that.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to come down to merril announcements. We know within the next few days, Your Honor, the old jolly fellow will be coming to your house, I suppose, with gifts. Who?
Our IT guy. Our new IT guy.
Yeah, yeah. Mike, we're going to give you the privilege of, uh, introducing a new city employee.
There we go. I think I got it on now. Um, wanted to introduce William, our new IT director who joined just here recently, um, joining us all the way from New Hampshire, and so glad to see we're an employer of choice nationwide. Welcome.
I told William that, uh, the outgoing IT director and I had the same hairstyle. But we're not going to insist that he cut his hair off. You can keep it, because we do have something in common, we're both Army guys. Okay, Councilmember Kayler?
And, Your Honor, I'd like to mention that, uh, Mr. Hood is retiring tomorrow, and...
Is it tomorrow already?
Well, I didn't sign no three copies. I didn't see that. I, I still haven't seen that for him to go, but, um, his wife told me different, but, um, I just want to mention years of service, sir.
Yeah, we, we certainly welcome William, but we're going to miss my twin. But if Chris says it's time for you to go, it's time for you to go. I'm not going to get on her bad side. Uh, but we certainly wish you well in your new chapter in life, playing a lot of golf and all the fun stuff, traveling. Yeah, all that stuff sounds good. Okay, now we're going to go to merril announcement. Again, the jolly old fellow hopefully will come to your house, bring you gifts instead of coal. And with that, it brings me to tonight's Thothstapunda, it's from Benjamin Franklin, and I quote, "A good conscience is a continual Christmas," end quote. I would accept the motion to adjourn.
So move. Second?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign? We adjourn. See my new gavel?